It's been a come to order Hammond City Council, January 14th, 2020. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Now for election, we will open nominations, open the floor for nominations for president.
I'd like to nominate Carly White Gonzalez for president.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Now for vice president, open the floor to nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Sam for vice president.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Now for our public hearing, number one, an ordinance to amend ordinance UDC number 14-5364, Article 11.4.2, street lighting requirements, general requirements, recommended approval by the zoning commission, Tracy Scholace.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So I'm here to update our UDC code requirements for lighting standards. Currently, we have a bunch of different standards, and we'd like to go to the LED light standards. We've also added a few things in for spacing based on what light a developer decides to use, and our zoning commission has recommended approval for this. So we're asking for the change in our UDC. As you know, this is a living, active document that we work on every day, and when we see things that aren't working, that need to be tweaked or updated, we bring to our zoning commission or planning commission and ask you guys to officially adopt it for us.
Is there anyone here in the public on this matter? Sure.
My name is Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive in Hammond. I'm just wondering if this is, this ordinance is for existing street lighting or just new developments? Trace.
It's for new developments, but from what I understand, Robert Morgan's here and maybe can give you insight, but I think any replacement of existing lightings will also meet these requirements?
Or additional lighting.
Or additional, yes ma'am, anything new. Yes, ma'am.
And, I'm sorry, and how is this to be addressed if a neighborhood needs more light or feels they need more lighting? What is the avenue of address, for addressing that issue?
I think you need to contact Robert Morgan, and they will check that area out, see if there's, you know, new lighting that needs to be placed, if there's spacing issues, but contact Robert Morgan's office, they handle all the lighting.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this matter? Questions or comments from the council? Number two, an ordinance to amend ordinance UDC number 14-5364, Article 12 floodways, floodplains, and storm water management to update freeboard requirements and update the drainage design requirements from 10-year storm to 100-year storm, recommended approval by the zoning commission.
Okay, so we're asking you to update two parts of our flood ordinance. One, the freeboard requirements, we updated a couple of years ago to require one foot above base flood for new construction. That was amended in one part of the UDC and not the other, so we're asking for that to be updated. And we're also asking for the current 10-year design storm requirements to be changed to Short condensed version, it's based on engineering, and 10-year storm, you hold less water on your property, 100-year storm, you're holding more water on your property, so it's not going to affect your adjacent property, and it's for new development to hold more water help with our flood issues.
Anyone here in the public on this matter? Questions or comment by the council? All right, we'll move into our regular session. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I'll ask you to rise for our prayer and our pledge, and ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
I ask before we get into our prayers this evening that we take a moment of silence in recognition of Mayor Buddy Bell who passed away. Gracious Father, we thank you right now, we give you glory, honor, and praise that it do your name. Thank you, Father God, that you woke us up this morning, closing our right mind with activity and use of our limb. Thank you for your darling son, who died upon the cross that we too would have access to the tree of life. We thank you, Father God, right now that you continue to give us the perfect peace, continue to guide us and keep us. I just continue to bless the council right now, that you have the Father continue to order our steps and lead us in the right way. I just continue to bless our city administration, continue to give them the tools and the guidance that they need in order, right now, Father God, to set our city on the right course. We ask that you continue to bless our police department and our fire department as they continue to protect and serve us. We give you glory and honor and praise, Father, because without you, we are nothing. And Father God, we ask that you continue to use us in the best of our abilities to continue to move forward in everything that we do, and for that, we give you glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Now for our pledge, I'll ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
To the flag, and the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for our reports, first up for the council reports, we have Ms. EJ Forgotson.
Forgotson.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Forgotson, to give us a presentation on the clothing donation collection boxes.
Oh, I'm EJ Forgotson. I serve on the board of Keep Hammond Beautiful and also Keep Tangahoe Parish Beautiful, and I'm going to start out with, I hope I can work this thing. Okay, this is one of the first pictures I took of these donation boxes that had become dump sites. This was taken May 1, 2018, and as we, let's see, I think I just clipped for the next one. This is kind of located near Walmart in a parking lot. And as you can see, they can't stuff everything in these boxes. This is actually, this is daily. I mean, they can clean them up, but the next day, it could be just like this. And there are more of these boxes around, but these are the ones that I travel by most of the time. And this one is on West Thomas by the Winn-Dixie. And this is the last one. I took this yesterday, and I mean, I was like, it can't get much worse than this. And what we're asking is that, let's see if I have my other.
Where's that one located?
This one is located across from Walmart in a parking lot. And they've been placed in different areas around the city, as I understand, there are lots of them, and they are actually being used for dump sites. They're not just in our city limits, they are all around in the parish and in other parishes also. As I understand it, they're supposed to be emptied once a week, but they are strictly a terrible eyesore, and I can't imagine them not creating a lot of rodents and stuff that come through. What we're asking for the city council is to remove these boxes from the city limits and not have them placed in the city limits of Hammond. And a lot of times, they just place them, nobody knows who are, where, who they're from or where they're from. So I hope you would keep this in mind, and let's keep Hammond beautiful and clean. Thank you.
Thank you, EJ.
Somebody give us some information on the boxes, Tamara? Come up? Obviously, we have a lot on the agenda, so I don't want to spend too much time on this, but we should probably get all the information and try and figure out a plan.
Please feel free to pass these on. Hi, everybody, I'm Tamara Danelle, I'm the director of Ginger Ford North Shore Fuller Center for Housing. We've been in Hammond for 28, 29 years. We started off as Ginger Ford Habitat for Humanity back in the early 90s. I want to first thank EJ for bringing this to our attention, because although there have been times when those look like that, I know that our white ones don't look like that today, because I went to all of those sites today and took pictures, I do know that on occasion, they do get full and ugly, and I would definitely like to address this problem. And I want to thank EJ for keeping our city and our parish as clean as it is, because of her efforts, it is a clean place to live, and I thank you for that. So yes, this is a problem that needs to be addressed. I do want to come to you with some solutions and with the rest of the story, so to speak. So Ginger Ford North Shore Fuller Center for Housing serves low-income elderly and disabled residents of Tangahoe and Livingston parishes. We're a nonprofit Christian housing ministry which uses volunteers to build and repair houses for low-income families. Currently, we're building a new house in Kip Andrews District for a single mom with four kids. We would like to build our next one in Councilman Wells District or Councilman Andrews District, where we own property, and so this directly affects the areas that we serve. One of our revenue streams is through a partnership with a company called MPS. MPS partners with our nonprofit only within the city of Hammond. Our bins are white, the other bins are different colors, that's a different company that represents those bins. Our bins stay locked, some of the other companies' bins that represent other charities, their bins don't stay locked. So for example, when I went to Walmart today to check on our bins and to make sure it was all cleaned up, I noticed that the pink bins next to our white bins were wide open, and there appeared to be a crack addict exploiting the donations in that bin, so, because the box was unlocked. So I want to remind everybody that the boxes are inanimate objects, the boxes don't cause problems, people cause problems. So how do we help people not to cause problems and create litter in our city or our parish with these boxes? I just want to tell you that we partnered with MPS, which is based in New Orleans, back in middle of 2015. Since that time, we've raised over $50,000 to support our nonprofit housing ministry that serves the city primarily, this parish, and also Livingston Parish on occasion. If these donation boxes were removed from this city and/or this parish, it would create a huge revenue crunch on this nonprofit ministry, and I would be coming to each of you, asking you to support more fundraisers, and money would probably be coming out of your pockets personally to help us continue our mission. The other thing that would happen is these clothes that get donated to these boxes would end up, most likely, in our landfill and our ditches and on the sides of the road, where EJ and the volunteers spend tons of time picking up that one shoe, or that handbag, or that piece of clothes, or trash, or litter that was tossed, and we know we don't want to create more trash on our roadsides. Currently, there are eight locations within the Hammond City Limits where the white Fuller Center bins are located, and I've got the addresses listed on here. Of those, three tend to cause problems, the ones in front of Winn-Dixie, the ones by Walmart, and the ones by Great Wall. There was another one on North Morrison Boulevard that EJ and I cleaned up one day, and it's since been removed. So some of the suggestions that I have are number one, in working with the Fuller Center and MPS, the company that removes all of these donated items from our white boxes, they take them to New Orleans, and from there, they're weighed, and then a check is sent to the Fuller Center, and then those clothes are shipped to Texas. So one good thing is all those donations are leaving our parish and not ending up in our landfill. That's a great thing for us. They're not staying in our parish, they're not going to our landfill. So I would like to add some wording to our boxes that says, if the donation bin is full, please do not leave your donation here. Bring your donations to the Fuller Center at 955 South Morrison Boulevard. Dumping is prohibited, because if the donation bins are full, then we can take it and put it inside our reuse store until the truck comes. MPS sends a truck twice a week, it was Tuesdays and Fridays, now it's going to be Wednesdays and Fridays, to pick up from all of the white bins. I cannot speak for the pink bins and the blue bins out there, not our charity, not our company. The other thing is, for the locations that seem to get in excess on our regular basins, we would have no problem getting another bin added so that the donations can go into the bins and stay off the parking lot. Number three, I can tell you that having become aware of the problems, anytime somebody calls me and says, "Your donation bin is overflowing," if I am made aware of it, either I or one of my coworkers will go that day and pick up the stuff and bring it back to the Fuller Center and get rid of it, we'll clean it up. EJ and I have cleaned it up before, I've cleaned it up today, and I've cleaned it up last week, I'll go whenever, whatever it takes to keep our revenue stream, I will clean it myself. The last thing is, I would like to advise the other companies in the area to put locks on their boxes to keep people from digging through and pilfering. Remember, it's a people problem, not a box problem. We've got to figure out how to keep people putting the donations in the bins, getting all that stuff out of our parish, helping the people in our parish get what they need through affordable housing programs like the Fuller Center. And, let me make sure I covered everything. I think that's it. Just remember, where the white bins, everybody else is somebody else that we'd be more than likely, more than happy to get into.
Is the wording on the boxes, does it have, "If full, please call?"
No, but we could add that. We could add whatever we want to add.
Would it be helpful for you to be the only boxes?
That would be wonderful.
Do we currently, as a city, do we have any kind of regulations or policies on these boxes, like any kind of permitting or anything, any guidance?
Bobby, I think, is here to kind of address what, how we've handled this and what we've been doing.
Good evening. Currently, we don't have any permitting or permission therefore to do such type of dropping.
Or guidelines, or standard, or just kind of hanging out there?
Just kind of hanging out there. And anytime we don't have permissible ordinance that allows something, it's typically not allowed by the city unless that's something you all want to do.
Have we ever contacted the other companies? If the other boxes are the only problem, have we contacted them, they responded to us, any kind of way?
I have a second too. I used to come to these meetings before some of you even born, some of you I reckon hustling St. Thomas. About eight years ago, I attended a meeting of Keep Hammond Beautiful, and they elected me president that day, and I can't quit, they won't let me, we're down to only a few members, and I wish each one of you would take the time to appoint one person from your district to join us on the second Tuesday of every month at 10 o'clock, we need your help. We're trying hard, you can't pick yourself, you can't pick your way out of the litter problem in Hammond about these boxes. I respect very much what Tamara does, I've known her since she was a little girl too. And can I ask you something? How much money do y'all really make off that? Is it really substantial?
Almost $15,000 a year.
Wow, I'm shocked, that that is, that's substantial. But she has a very good point. It's not going to go away. We have the white boxes, the blue boxes, the pink boxes, and the way it's going, a year from now, two years from now, there's going to be yellow boxes and orange boxes. Where does it stop? It stops right here. If y'all can't do something about it, we can't, and I know Tamara's trying very hard. I called one of the boxes, it was not one of hers, and the person said, I said, "Who do you work for?" He said, "I can't tell you that." I said, "Who's your boss?" "It's a lady." "Where is she, in New Orleans?" I said, "Would you have her call me?" I gave her my number, he said, "Yes." I called five times, never got an answer. These people come in here, they don't care about Hammond, they don't care what it looks like, and whatever they make off that garbage is put there, I don't think it's that substantial. So something has to be done. It's a problem, and I don't think it's going to go away without your help. We can't do it. We try hard with our limited time, we don't cost the city anything, in fact, the grants we get pay for our bags, I pick up sticks and everything else. We need your help. Thank you so much.
Andre, can we write a letter to the other boxes and tell them that we know a lot of them want them in the city and only have Tamara, the local provider, doing it? One of the things I've seen in my businesses is people will come, the dumpsters, and go through them at night, and it's hard to keep them out. So if you're locking them, you know, that makes a big difference. So can we select one person, like the Fuller Center and MPS, to do the boxes?
I don't think you can select one person, everybody's got to have the same rules, but, I mean, as I understand it, these are on private property. So to me, you contact the private property owner and tell them, "This is on your property, and it's in violation." But the photos that I've seen, that's a violation of litter laws. And you tell them that.
Well, that can happen any given night.
Yeah.
Yeah, we notified all of the property owners, as of today, we've notified them.
And we've got that excessive consumption ordinance that we passed a while ago, remember that from City Service? That could apply here, where there's multiple callouts, and if this business is in violation, they could be fined as the business for having these on their property, for having multiple callouts. So I'm going to have to look at it and see what our options are, and you can't just pick and choose one favorite group over another, they all would have to follow up.
Is there any way for us to require a business owner, say it's, say it's the Walmart property, that they have to have a written contract in order to allow the, or they have to follow certain rules even though it's public-private property, that they have to have a permit for this?
Doesn't that apply the same rules in terms of litter and appearance and all of those, and some of those appear to be in violation of our ordinance? So is.
It's a revolving, it's a revolving door. We've had litter issues, Robert's done a wonderful job, whenever it's notified by code enforcement, he goes out, and the problem is rectified temporarily, so it's, it's, it's an ongoing issue. We've, we've had litter issues as a result of the overflow, but Robert's taken pictures, he's dealt with this quite some time.
Probably when you sent those out, did you send to the property owner, or did you send it to the owner identified?
I had the call to send it to the owner identified, but just to update you, seven, eight months, nine months ago, the mustard boxes, I had four of them removed, they were based out of New Orleans. They're, they're gone, and as of today, I spoke with a company in Dallas, Western Recyclants, that has the pink and the blue boxes, the ones that's really, really horrible. I talked with him, and he was one of the district managers, and after discussing it with him, those are going to be removed. All of those pink and blue boxes that you saw will be removed. There was a new one that was put in on Morrison by the Food Mark, a white box. These boxes are brought in, they're put in, they're, it does not come through the city to even get permission from it, that box is going to be removed. So those pink and blue ones, and then on those particular boxes, on the pink and blue ones, it's, it's cancer for women, some men or something.
Susan.
Susan, thank you. When you read that thing, it says, "They get no contribution from them at all, nothing is donated to that," it just has her name on it, and it tells you on it, all, all of the profit goes to this company, which is based, they use her name from Baton Rouge, but they're based out of Dallas. So after speaking with him today, I think it's about five or six of them, those are the ones, when you say that they're unlocked, I think they're breaking the lock, they're unlocked, those are the ones that are really, really horrible. We've had few incidents with, with Tamara, I agree with that, but as of today, those are going to be removed, and the new one that's brought in, it's going to be removed, and maybe from there, since you do bring in such money, maybe with just hers, we can monitor, but I don't know, is it legal to just have one and not others? That's not my department.
Which ones are being removed, so?
The pink and blue ones and the other ones.
So how many we left, so we only left with hers then?
We only left with hers.
So they're all going to be removed, so how do we remove those and be okay? I mean, I'm fine.
Well, they'll remove them voluntarily.
Yeah, I asked them because of such, it's a dump.
If they don't come back and lock.
Now, this is what Tamara said, she went to Walmart to clean up today, I'm sure she did, I wouldn't doubt what she said, but this is what I went back today, and they're all in front of a basket, in front of her boxes again, but I'm sure it's from the pink boxes.
Yeah, there was, actually, I have a picture of a lady in the pink box going through all this stuff.
And, and I, I just went back to all other locations again today. He asked me how much time he had, I told him ASAP. I know the car is coming from Dallas, I don't expect it to happen three, four, five days, but I'm sure that if it's not within the next 30 days, I have his number direct, because I told him that we're going to remove them if you don't.
Andre, are we even able to prohibit them, since it's on private property?
Well.
Not that I'm saying we want to, I'm just curious, is that even allowed?
You could probably treat it like a garbage can, it's got to be out of sight, can't be visible from the streets, it's got to be in certain locations within the property, you could do that.
Then you can, you can look at it another way, that's a business, and it needs to be permitted. You know, you can't put two buildings or three businesses on one lot, it has to be permitted, so it should have come through the city.
You could require, if a private business does have one of these collection boxes that they permit it, and it is registered with the city.
Other dumps are fenced in though too, don't you? Y'all make them fence them in, I mean.
We make the dumps fenced in. And, and the last thing that I need to say is that the assistant manager at Walmart wants them removed, the assistant manager at Winn-Dixie wants them removed.
Yeah, I would think that businesses don't want.
I, I talked to the, talked to the assistant manager Monday, I think it was, she wants them removed, because they're, they're, one day they was out there, they was having the garage sale, the crackheads, the people in the cars, they were having the garage sale. I talked to the assistant manager at Winn-Dixie, and I really can't tell you what he said, but he wants them removed.
Their property.
All right, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, sir.
So you just said Winn-Dixie want to move, Walmart want to move, and all you have to do, if they want to move, that's all they got to do is give you a written permission, and you can have them move if they want them removed, because I'm talking about, I deal with rental property.
Right.
When I want a car removed, that's all I do is call the record service and show them my property license.
Right.
So, I mean, it won't take, I'm talking about, they can be removed tomorrow, if the, if the stores want them removed, as they say.
Okay, and, and answering your question, take Winn-Dixie for instance, Winn-Dixie leases the property, but it's owned by Sterling Property, so they don't outright have the, I wouldn't think, the permission to remove it. I tried contacting Sterling Properties, and the number doesn't go through, so I haven't had a chance to go to the office yet, but I did go talk, I were able to talk to them. And I talked to the manager at Food Mark, where the guy that worked there, he said the owner is out of the country, and then the manager's not here, so I went there like five times, and each time was a different story. And when I finished talking to him today politely and professionally, he said it would be removed, because I told him it was in violation, he did not have permission to put it there, and that's two businesses on one property, which isn't allowed.
Do they just drop them off if somebody gives them permission, or are they just dropping them off?
They would have to give them permission.
Okay.
But what I'm asking is, do they just drop these boxes off?
Without checking in with actual owner? Is there a process like that, they have?
I'll tell you, that first box, where I called Tamara on that, and it was just literally a garbage dump, and Tamara did get that box removed pretty quickly. However, that box was dropped there without the property owner knowing it.
Because, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, a lot of these, these big companies, they don't actually, they're not there, they own multiple retail centers and they're leasing it.
They just find a spot that's easy to get to and visible, so that's what they do. And, and I mean, this is not just in the city limits of Hammond, I want to stress that to you, because, I mean, they're in Washington Parish, dump site, living there everywhere.
And the honey mustard, the mustard ones that I had removed, I happened to catch the guy unloading it that particular day, and his truck and license plate was from out of Texas.
Yeah, so.
It was not local.
I might be amazed, they may not even have.
It's a big money thing.
Drop them off where they have one, they see one, they drop them off, and the property owner really doesn't want them there anyway, so.
They don't contact the property owners, because they don't even know who the property owners are.
Yeah.
They don't have.
They drop them where they feel like.
Okay.
Well, thank you for. Well, thank you for following up and getting those, the ones that are problems removed. I think we should just monitor this, unless someone else has a suggestion at this time. Follow up and see how we're doing, Robert, with getting the ones that are a problem removed, and, you know, let us know. I mean, I certainly don't want to take away your funding without really thinking about this and talking about it, and really figuring out if there's better ways to do it.
Definitely wanna find a solution, and we'll definitely monitor ours better than we now.
But what happens is, Tamara, these boxes are clean, but somebody dumps a mattress and box bring there. I mean, how... you can clean them, and within, what?
Ten minutes?
Thirty minutes? There's... I mean, who does that?
So right now on the table, we're just introducing a problem right now?
Oh, yes, just bring it to our attention. Yeah, we don't have anything to vote on, we don't have any resolutions or whatnot at this point. Okay, any other comments?
So you don't think if you didn't have the boxes like St. Vincent Paul's, or Mother Law, or what, clean out the closet, they'd bring them there, and I don't think they'd come to you with that at the Fuller Center?
I mean, people do, yeah. I mean, but there's way more than we can take. I mean, if you put all those boxes of donations together, they'd be coming to our store every day.
That would be good. I mean, we'll do what we have to do to solve the problem.
Maybe if we had a drop off area inside of your fence with the boxes.
What do we have, Steve?
Yeah, I think we just need to give it a little bit of thought, but I mean, it certainly is an eyesore. I love what the Fuller Center does. I certainly understand EJ's point, but in 10 minutes after cleaning it, it can, a pickup truck can back up there and unload. I mean, it's not just, you know, we got the same problem at Goodwill, and that shopping center, I mean, there needs to be a fence or something to hide that, because you pass by there on Monday morning, all weekend, people have just backed up trucks and just unloaded there. Then the wind comes, and that blows all over the place. You know, it's just a whole... Well, yeah, yeah.
Well, this was the little thing that we were just gonna specifically touch upon today.
Yeah, you probably got a list.
Is full, things that y'all don't even notice.
So are we giving citations? Are we giving any citations for code enforcement?
Yeah, we notified all of the owners of the problematic areas, only those areas that were litter.
What's the penalty for that as far as payment wise? If you leave all this litter out here and you actually...
We asked them to do, to rectify the problem in 10 days after receipt of notice. If it's not done, we'll hire a contractor to remove the litter, but that doesn't solve the problem of the continued box issue sitting there. So if Walmart is indeed wanting to have them removed, chances are that problem's gonna be solved, and the same thing with Winn-Dixie property. So those are probably the greatest problem areas, so we're probably gonna have this problem solved if they fall through with that.
He made a comment, Albertson, anything with Albertsons?
We notified them as well.
Okay, so from what I understand, the pink boxes and the blue boxes and the other colors except the white ones, or within a few weeks, should be gone during that period of time, and if Winn-Dixie and these other places so choose to voluntarily remove even the white ones, that may happen. And let's say over the next 30 days, we see how all of this shakes out, Tamara, I think, is, you know, been put on notice to be more vigilant.
Absolutely.
And, you know, hopefully she can do that, and we won't have to revisit this.
Well, she gets a lot of my pictures.
And EJ will send you pictures when you're not being vigilant.
I'm really good about that. I can only fix what I know about it. If I don't know about it, I can't fix it. So I'll be glad to fix anything y'all don't find me about.
So it sounds like this may take care of itself, and if not, we will come back and we will address it again.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you, EJ, for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tamara, for responding.
And thank y'all for keeping Hammond clean. It's a job and a half, let me tell you.
Any other council reports?
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm having some issues on Route St. Martin with cars being parked in the road, Route St. Martin. I don't know if this is... I mean, last time I checked, I don't think you can park your car in the road. Route St. Martin's a public road, so I just wanna make sure that... I've brought this attention to the chief before, and he supposedly put notices on some of these cars parked there. I'm not too sure if that's been done or not yet, but I still get calls from the residents saying there's cars parked all on Route St. Martin on the back side. So, you know, it's a common occurrence here lately, and I just wanna make sure that which steps need to be taken, or you can just park your car in the middle of the road, I don't know. I don't think you can, so what do we need?
You're talking about the middle of the road, or you're talking about on the side?
On the side, on the front of condos, yeah.
Chief?
Okay, so I will tell you, we have taken action. We have handed out letters in which we put on, and we did the same thing in Councilman Leon's district. It was basically just a warning saying, hey, don't park. Years ago, they came up with a parking violation ticket. The question was whether it was a legitimate ticket, whether it had any kind of hold behind it as far as what would happen to it, because we'd go, just write them a ticket, put it on their windshield, but it actually wouldn't go through the court system. So they went away from that ticket. You know, it's y'all district, if you want us to go through and start towing vehicles, then I think you probably could as an obstruction of the roadway. Being that it's citizens of Hammond, we prefer not to go through as a police officer to just start yanking cars and towing them. We've given warning after warning. You know, in order to write a state-issued citation, you have to have the actual driver. So I'd have to, you know, we've sat out there, we've tried to get people, tell them to move on. My traffic division has worked it. But, you know, it's your council district, if you want us to start hooking on the cars, and you're willing to stand behind that, then I'm willing to do it.
I just, you know, you don't give tickets for that? Is there any ticket that you can be given? Like, so where if you... Usually when somebody gets, has to pay a dollar or $200, usually they'll start learning, well, you know what, maybe I don't need to park my car when I got a parking lot behind my condo and get it out the road.
I don't disagree with you, and that's why we handed out the papers, and we put it on their cars, to ask them to move it. In some cases, that works, in some cases, it doesn't. In order to write a state-issued citation, which has any kind of teeth or any kind of financial penalty to it, we have to have an actual driver to be able to do that, too.
So if they're out in the street and written the letters already, and that's not working, as Sam's saying, and you said, the ticket's not even at the court, you tow it, and I get my car back unless they pay it. So that would resonate among everyone.
That is, and I will say, these cars on, although they're in the roadway, and I think it falls within the classification of obstruction of the roadway by the law, they're not obstructing passage as far as traffic to go through those cars. They'll be through that lane or through that roadway, because I've driven through it myself. Yeah, they have parking, they have ample parking behind it. Like I said, I'm willing to take whatever action that y'all want us to take. You know, we've sat out there, we've sat out there, we've told people to move. If, like I said, it's your council district, it's your constituents, if you wanna start towing them, I mean, I'm more than willing to do that.
Do we not have a system of parking tickets? I mean, we've all gotten a ticket in New Orleans, like, we don't have that system?
That's what I'm getting at. That's where, exactly.
We do not.
That sounds like a great idea for that mayor's court we wanna do, you know? Is this ordinances that we have to pass to do parking tickets?
Like, years ago, they came up with some type of citation, but then when you questioned, well, where does it actually go? Nobody actually knew. You just kinda wrote it, some people would show up at city court and pay it, some people would show up at the PD, and it was like a $10 ticket, but I think that...
So in order to do a parking ticket, we have to have an enforcement-type action, and right now, the issue is they don't go to city court, and they don't go to code enforcement to pay their ticket.
That's correct.
Then we need a way to enforce it.
And that's the process, is gonna fix it. I'm not saying tow them, but I mean, obviously, if they didn't keep, after they get a ticket, if there's no ticket in place, and they actually have to pay some, they're not gonna learn to move out.
Well, that's our options right now.
Yeah, that's what Carly said, we need to get something, I think, looked at to implement some kind of parking ticket. You go to New Orleans, I mean, you watch everywhere you go, you're gonna get either a boot or a ticket or something, so everybody, you're not gonna just park anywhere in New Orleans, so, because you got tickets, so.
Chief, I don't know if this is for you or for Andre, because I have a problem with the cars, the bus, tell me, they parked on the sidewalk, and I'm talking about when it's time, and hopefully I get something done this time, this year coming up. When it's time to cut the grass on the sidewalk, they actually got cars and trucks actually parked on the sidewalk, and I'm talking about, this is something that been there for years.
So I would tell you, the sidewalk would not be a police matter, that would be more of a code enforcement manner, or matter, I should say. You know, and this is something we dealt with in Councilman Vittorio's district a while back. A guy would park on a grassy area, and it was technically, he was on the opposite side of the stop sign, so he wasn't obstructing traffic control, but it was just a nuisance of where he was, which is similarly gonna be the sidewalk. So as a criminal matter or a traffic misdemeanor matter, we would not have jurisdiction to go up and enforce something on a sidewalk.
All right, thank you.
Any other council reports? All right, Mayor?
Councilman Leon called about the update on the flood study over in your district, your district as well. The engineer, we're trying to line him up to come in front of the council at the next meeting, or beginning of February, something like that, he can give you the over view.
That would be good. Great.
Has he completed that first set of consults? Is he still working on that?
He has completed that, and he has some recommendations for further study, and some steps that would then be up to the council's discretion and monetary-wise. So he's putting together a cost estimate and a timeline of those recommendations, and that's what he would like to present overall.
Good. Anything else, Mayor? That's it? All right, now we'll move to our minutes of December 23, 2019. Any motion, please?
Make a motion, and we accept our minutes from our December 23, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Vittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Now, minutes of January 6, 2020, special council meeting. Need a motion, please?
Make a motion, and we accept our minutes from our January 6, 2020 special council meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Vittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Now for resolutions, old business, none, new business. One, a resolution authorizing the Hammond Regional Art Center to host and serve alcohol on Friday, February 7, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. for the Fourth Annual Art of the Cocktail at 217 East Thomas Street and within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park between Cypress and Cherry Streets. Lacey Landrum.
This is a fundraiser, and I'm here representing the art center as the board president, not as the director of administration tonight. This is a fundraiser, this is our fourth annual one, and they are planning to do it within the art center itself, and then in that back alleyway area where they also have brews arts later in the year. This has been quite successful, and we have many of our local businesses provide cocktails and have a cocktail competition. This year, there'll be, from 6:00 to 7:00, a VIP hour, and then from 7:00 to 10:00, the rest of general admission hour soon.
Any questions or comments from the audience? From the council?
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Vittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution authorizing the Hammond Regional Art Center to obtain a waiver of the open container law on Friday, February 7, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. for the Fourth Annual Art of the Cocktail at 217 East Thomas Street and within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park between Cypress and Cherry Streets.
Same deal, this is just for the waiver of the open container law. One thing I will mention, too, we do wristbands, check IDs, and also have a state permit that guides all the actions of the activity.
Questions or comments from anybody?
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Vittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to approve the tax exemption application for Gnarly Barley Brewing Company that was approved by the Board of Commerce and Industry on December 13, 2019. Lacey?
I am going to let the consultant, who has done diligent work on this application, and I think, Zach, are you gonna start?
Yes.
Zach would like to address the council with just a little bit of background about the business itself, and they're gonna give you some update on the financials of this application, and we have done our due diligence inside of the house, checking our records, too, and I think everything shows to be matching up. So any questions that you have, we'll address the consultant and go from there.
Zach, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Zach Caravan, 1511 University Drive. So I'm Zach, owner of Gnarly Barley. I know most of the people in the room here. So as we continue to grow our small business, we're obviously looking for ways that we can, you know, take advantage of the programs that exist through the state. So this is one that we feel it fits us very nicely. This is, as a small business, these kind of programs really help out, because as, yes, we are a manufacturer, we're a light manufacturer, and it's, you know, the margins are much thinner in the light manufacturing side. So, yeah, as we continue to grow, I don't have to, you know, continue to talk about who we are. I've got up here and done my spill many a times. But, yeah, so I wanted to be available for any questions. Also, I was gonna have our consultant that's handling the details on this to speak a little bit about the financials, so. Jason?
Very good, thank you. My name is Jason Ambo. I'm a resident of Gonzalez, Louisiana, at 14363 Somerset Drive. Brief background, I was 10 years with the Ascension Parish Assessors Office, and in seven years on my own consulting company that I started specifically to help small business take advantage of the things that large business always gets to take advantage of, but small business owners always get locked out. And so that's kinda my calling. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The good news is that tonight, my job's really, really super easy, because the story I have to tell is simple. You know, it's local kids, made good, started craft brewery, doing tremendous, from here, live here, kids go to school here, they went to school here, they wanna remain here, and really, all they're asking you to do is to approve what the state is trying to give them, which is the industrial tax exemption, and nothing more, nothing special, nothing complicated, simply what they want to avail themselves of what's available to them as a business incentive program. It's the industrial tax exemption program. It was initially put into our constitution in '73 for the purpose of attracting large manufacturers from outside the realm of Louisiana. It's done a great job, if you know about our petrochemical industry over in Baton Rouge It's done a great job, if you know about our petrochemical industry over in Baton Rouge and Gonzales, where I'm from, it's absolutely booming, it's had a huge impact on the state. And, and in this, in the successive years, more and more local and smaller manufacturers are, are taking advantage of the problem, is the system can be very cumbersome, and they've changed the system four times in the last four years and continue to make it complicated and difficult to manage. So just to give you a brief background on what happens at, at the current iteration of the program, which I'll be honest, it could change next year, uh, you know, because it's just what's been happening, but, um, so they filed advance, which says, hey, we are thinking about doing this expansion, or this, or, or these additions, and we're going to create this many new jobs and/or retain this many new jobs, let's be very specifically designated, the dollar amounts have to be put in there. Once they complete the project, then we file the application, and the application has more detailed information about the entire project. That's reviewed by the Louisiana Economic Development, and once they review it for compliance and make sure that all the, everything's in order, then it goes to the Commerce and, um, and Industry Board, and then they give their approval, which has happened, then it comes back to you, so this is a fairly new thing. Four years ago, local governing bodies had no say-so, so some of your tax dollars were being exempted without your approval. Now you have the opportunity to have a voice in that. So what it exempts is specifically 80% of the personal property taxes that would otherwise be paid on the new equipment. Personal property is a funny kind of word, but what it means is the machinery and equipment and buildings associated with that, so the things that would ordinarily be on the property tax rolls. So 80% will be exempted, they'll pay 20% of the tax that wouldn't ordinarily do, and that's for the first 10 years. Really, it's five years, and we have to renew it after five years. After the five-year period, we have to go before the board and show them, yes, we still have these jobs that we said we would have, the equipment is still there, it still has value, et cetera, et cetera, to, to get, to get the final five years. Um, once you guys give us your approval and the other varying taxing bodies do the same, then it goes back to the LED where we'll do a couple of, of, uh, an affidavit of final costs, a couple of little things, and it goes to the governor for signature. Um, I don't know what else I could tell you about that. I have some data in here and some, some quick facts I'd just like to review to you about, uh, with this program. The last page is a spreadsheet, it's pretty detailed, I'll be glad to go over it with you on, I won't bore you with it. If you're like me, stayed up late last night, watched a little ballgame, and if I can get you out of here tonight, it'd be great. Um, the initial advance we filed was for $350,000. The final application that will be filed is 383491 and new equipment additions. The application you've received from the LED has a different number on that, that was a clerical error that was made, and again, it's just in the application process, that's, this is going to be the final number that we'll report for the affidavit of final costs and the project completion report, and that's the numbers I've quoted to you on the back of the page there. 100% of this project is for expansion of, of the brewery and added capacity and canning capacity and efficiency, so no capitalized maintenance or required regulatory, uh, construction was included. The new payroll for the ex- expansion equals approximately $100,000, $180,000, and almost doubled their payroll at the time. Uh, since then, they started four years ago with, of course, Zach himself, at the end of this project, they had 16 full-time employees. Right now, they currently have 23, so they continue to grow and employ more and more people, uh, but the, the numbers associated with this project were the five new jobs taken in 16. Uh, from its inception in 24, in 2014, Gnarly did over $4 million in sales last year, which is really impressive. I work with several craft brewers, by the way, and, and several different clients, their growth is really impressive. You guys should be proud of them, uh, to, to have them here. Uh, sales increased approximately $1 million, in part due to this expansion. The total tax abatement for the city of Hammond is only $8,046 over the 10-year period. During the 20-year lifespan of the equipment now, and the, um, Louisiana Tax Commission designates the average lifespan of different business equipment, it's 20 years in brewing equipment, so they'll be paying taxes on that for 20 years plus. Gnarly will pay $7,688, so they're going to pay almost just as much on this equipment over the lifetime of the equipment as they're asking for the exemption. During that same period, Gnarly will pay an estimated $507,400 in local sales use tax, as well as an estimated $200,000 in other property taxes, that's $13,000 in real property, $187,000 in personal property or M&amp;E. So they're still going to pay some substantial tax bills to, uh, local, to Hammond, as well as to the parish, uh, so it's, it's just a minor exemption. I can tell you this, that not only are they local, and they're a great story, and every great city, work their salt, has their own microbrewery these days, or their, their own craft brewer. Uh, you guys are fortunate, you've got, you've got some great folks doing this, but, um, sending the signal out there that Hammond is open for business and, and that companies can come and avail themselves of the, the tax incentives that are in the constitution is, I would suggest, a very important factor for you guys for any growth in attracting any outside industry that you want to come in, you want to attract that, that will bring some jobs from the outside, so. We would just urge you to approve, please, if you have any question whatsoever, I'd be glad to answer those.
Just to be clear-
Yes, ma'am.
-what we're abating or not collecting for 10 years is $8,000 and, $8,046?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to-
That will be the final number, and that includes the depreciation, depreciated, uh, taxable value of those assets over the 20-year lifespan, so that number goes down every year, every year, every year, every year, and, uh, again, and it's only 80% in the first 10 years.
Anyone here on this matter that would like to speak?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Can I speak about, uh, my name, I'm a voter of District 1.
Can you come to the, can you come to the podium and, and state your name and address?
My name is Richard Jackson, I'm a member, I'm a voter of District 1, Kippen, and I have, the conversation you have about Zach, I wish the city, I have met him, I like him, good businessman, make the world of him. What I'm saying about Zach, if the city can do anything about the Gnarly Barley, if the city can help him in any kind of way, please do it for his tax, try to help him, because we glad he's here, I have been to his place, got a nice business, clean business, great employees. So what I'm only saying, help him, and I'm going to give him another business whenever, and there is something, you catch a guy like him, when we met, his name's Zach, my name's Jack. And this is why we knocked it off, and he tried to do things, you know, for me, and I couldn't sit, but when I seen him here, I was wondering why he was here. I know he got a thriving business, what is he doing here? So if it's dealing with taxes, whatever, what have you, help him, and we need him here, he got a great business, and it's, I like the way his setup is.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm the mayor, Mayor Kippen, everybody, I want y'all to help him.
Thank you.
We glad he's here. Thank you.
Zach, you didn't bring the, the whole crew with you this time?
I'm taking him to every parish I go to, by the way, that's awesome, thank you.
Any, uh-
Any questions?
Questions from the council? Pleasure, the council?
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Hopefully, we'll have more of these, it means more-
That's right.
-more business in our city.
Jobs.
So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Number four, uh, resolution, number one, supporting the submission of a $15,000 grant application to the Cynthia Woods Mitchell Fund for the historic interiors for the preservation and restoration of the interior of Miller Memorial Library, a designated historic structure, and two, supporting a cash match of $15,000. Charles Borchers.
The, uh, Cynthia Woods Mitchell Fund is actually managed by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This is the same organization we applied to a few years ago for the Miller Memorial Library, for the roof, that project's been completed. Um, we've been looking at the renovation of that building as a phased project, the roof being the first phase, the second phase being the windows. Uh, we have an opportunity to apply for another phase, which would be some interior renovations, um, the ceiling, the flooring, et cetera. Um, we've got ample money in the grant match fund right now, the cover of $15,000 match, and I believe we have about $4,000 in residual funds from the roofing project that could go toward this project.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments from the council? Pleasure, the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Final adoption of ordinance, number one, final adoption of ordinance to amend ordinance UDC number 14-5364, Article 11.4.2, street lighting, general requirements, recommend approval by the zoning commission. Pleasure, the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption of ordinance to amend ordinance UDC number 14-5364, Article 12, floodways, floodplains, and stormwater management to update freeboard requirements and update the drainage design requirements for 10-year storm to 100-year storm, recommended approval by zoning commission. Pleasure, the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance and set for public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance to declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the items listed below to sell on govdeals.com. Um, do I need to sing these out loud? No.
You can make reference to the-
Reference in the list, Jana.
Okay, um, I just realized that maybe I should have separated the bicycles, because they will not be sold on govdeals, they will actually be donations.
So we need to amend that?
Make a motion to remove the bicycle, um, first, I'm going to take up the bicycles.
Uh, make a motion to amend this item to remove bicycles.
Second.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
So then, we're talking about this one?
Without bicycles.
Yes, without bicycles.
Um, the items listed are two vehicles that both have blown motors, um, the Crown Victoria was actually the marshal's office what they gave back to us, and, um, the Dodge Durango needs a new motor in it, and the other items was unclaimed property that the police department had in evidence, they advertised, and everyone come and picked it up, and then we have a front-end bu- bucket that's damaged, it's non-useable, and then we have a sprayer that's damaged, so we're just asking for permission to surplus it and sell it on govdeals.
Pleasure, the council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Then I'll just do a motion to amend?
How do you want to address the bicycles?
Um, I guess, uh, ordinance to declare the bicycles as surplus property and to donate them to a nonprofit organization.
Do I need to amend the agenda to say that first?
We need, we need to amend the agenda to add that item.
Okay. Uh, motion to amend the agenda to add a introduction of an ordinance to declare a surplus and authorize the donation of 26 bicycles.
Second.
Count, oh. There was Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilman Andrews. Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Now, consideration of that item?
To introduce.
To introduce.
These are bicycles that were unclaimed, that the police department either picked up or they were stolen, and we are surplusing them to donate them to nonprofit organizations.
Do you all have something that you pick in, uh, a donation, a nonprofit in general, or just-
We have a list of people that have called in and asked, and when we get bicycles available, depending on how many they want, how many we have, sometimes it's only one donation, you know, one organization that calls gets them all, or either they will, you know, limit four or five.
Pleasure, council.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.